Ready? Okay. Oh, there she is.
Hello.
Hi, Jackie. You ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call the minute, uh, the meeting's order at seven o'clock. A roll call.
Chair Street.
Yep.
Co-Chair Nichols.
Absent.
Secretary Demick here. Commissioner Aubrey.
Here.
Commissioner Blackstack.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
Commissioner, our Trusty Klein.
Here.
Very good. Uh, the next order on the agenda is approval of the regular meetings from the June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Did everybody have a chance to look them over? They were in the email. And if you do, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to go mouse and tell approve the minutes.
Support.
Support from Herb. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We gotta sign those before we leave. And public comments. I don't see any members of the public here, so that item is done. This is not a public hearing. Our unfinished business, housing readiness, zoning amendments, project update. Okay, Adam, floor's yours.
All right. And again, I appreciate you holding a special meeting, uh, this evening. So I wanted to go through the draft of amendments that you received by email. I provided a cover memo that just gives you an update on where we're at in this project. And we're nearing the end here. Also have a printed copy that I brought. The only difference between what was in your email, uh, and printed version is that in the printed version, I only included the pages that were their proposed revisions.
Okay.
In your email, if you're curious, that has all two hundred and some pages of your zoning ordinance.
I saw that.
Many, if not most of which, uh, don't have any changes proposed. So that's the only difference. Just wanted to save a little bit on paper.
Very good.
Um, so what, there was one change to the draft that resulted from the last meeting, uh, where I was here and we had a discussion. If you're curious, that was on page one hundred and nineteen, dealing with the number of copies of site plans that need to be submitted. The current language says eleven copies of the site plan should be submitted, both, uh, at your request, uh, basically eliminating a specific number and kind of leaving it open to the township administration to figure that out, to establish that. The following plans and data shall be submitted. The minimum number of copies required to be submitted shall be determined by each township. So that would just be something by policy or just by practice that the township would require however many copies that they need. That will help minimize expenses for property owners, developers appearing in the planning system.
And improve for us.
Um, the, I thought maybe it would be good to next touch on the zoning districts map So the, the remainder of the changes in the text are with regard to this proposed riverfront mixed-use district that would encompass the, the former DTE, uh, power plant study. That, uh, new district, proposed district, would be a change to the zoning map in that we would need to add that new district in the legend on the zoning map. And, um, it would, it would result in actually rezoning, initiating, doing a township-initiated rezoning of those properties that are immediately owned by DTE, immediately along, along the riverfront there. And then the new district that's included in text, which we'll go through, would, it would be applicable to that specific area. The other thing that I did was look at the master plan that was adopted last year, in particular, the future land use map from the master plan, and did a side-by-side comparison to the currently adopted zoning map. And it's, it's really quite consistent across, across the board. The future land use map is, is, um, not identical, certainly, but the zoning district map really does reflect the future land use map, uh, very well. There's the one area that I wanted to just bring to your attention, just for discussion, not sure what your thoughts would be on this, but, um, there is land that's presently zoned Mobile Home Park, uh, on the south side of Recor Road there. And that is a kind of a horse, uh, equestrian farm, kind of a beautiful facility, really.
Yep.
Um, I, I know why the township has that zoned residential mobile home park because there's, in, in the zoning enabling act, it says that, um, you can't outright exclude all uses from your community when there's a demonstrated demand for, for uses. And so the, the thought was, well, well, let's just at least identify or have some property in the township zone for Mobile Home Park so that somebody can come, or you can't come in and say, well, you've got no land, you know, that's, that's available for this particular use. But the theory behind that has changed a little bit. You do have property that, you do have a mobile home park active, uh, existing in, in the township. So you've already provided for that use in your community. In the master plan, uh, the master plan specifically talks about how there, it's not envisioned or planned that you would have any additional land for mobile home park use. But then it has some language in the text itself that says, if somebody were to come and propose a mobile home park, here are the location standards that you would evaluate, um, in order to do that. Uh, so from a, from a legal perspective, I think that the theory behind, let's make sure we've got some undeveloped property zone for mobile home park doesn't really hold up as much anymore. Um, and so you, I don't know if there's maybe a thought to, and this, this area is shown as, um, in your one-family residential district on the future land use map of your master plan. So with that said, I think you have an opportunity to go back to essentially, um, closer to what it actually is, and you would, uh, consider rezoning that property to the R three district. That's your least or your most restrictive residential district in the township. So that would be the district where agricultural uses, for example, are present and, and are encouraged. This would be a township-initiated rezoning, so it's not like the property owner is asking you for this. So if, if you were to say, yeah, okay, let's, let's consider rezoning that. Um, the procedure would be, we need to hold a public hearing for both the text that you would be considering and for the changes to the zoning map. And then property owners within, well, the property owners of that property would be notified. They would get a notice in the mail, and the surrounding properties within three hundred feet would also get a notice in the mail. Same thing with the, with the DTE property. DTE would get a notice in the mail indicating that we're considering rezoning their property, and then all the owners within three hundred feet would also get a notice in the mail. So they would have the opportunity to come to the meeting, that property owner, for example, um, and, and if they, for some reason, said, no, we want to keep it Mobile Home Park, I suppose they could come to you and ask for you to do that, and you might decide, okay, I'll move forward with it then. Um, so any thoughts on that, that particular property, the Mobile Home Park zoning?
It's a kind of a prime piece of real estate. I mean, the people like living in Bell River, even though it floods now and then.
Mm-hmm.
On the other side of Bell River, there's, you know, a lot of fancy homes that back up down to it there, so.
I'm sure that the people surrounding it wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
Not having a property next to them being zoned for Mobile Home Park.
I think there's only one house that's.
That might be within three hundred feet.
Uh, other than across the river.
Okay. Well, even across the river, they would get a notice too.
Yeah, even across the river, I'm sure they would rather have a nice home than a Mobile Home Park.
So you're talking about R three, correct?
Yeah. Yep, so that.
I'm trying to think, what would the advantage be for the current owner?
Well, um, Mobile Home Park, the Mobile Home Park District, in fact, we can look, let's just make sure, I guess I don't want to say it unless it's true, your MHP district allows, uh, no other building shall be allowed in that district except for mobile and manufactured home parks. So right now, their horse farm, their house, their farm, whatever, it's all non-conforming use. So it's a, they're restricted in, in what they could do. So technically, they wouldn't be able to expand their farm operation. Uh, there may be some, you know, other restrictions that, that would apply there. So this would benefit them in that they would no longer be a non-conforming use, they would be a conforming use. And so they could.
R three, I don't know, it's kind of a stretch. They're more of an agricultural, all of our agricultural districts are kind of non-conforming and there are threes.
But the R three district does allow farms.
Okay.
As a principal permitted use.
Okay.
Yeah. So the R three district allows single-family dwellings, of course, uh, farms, greenhouses, uh, cemeteries, a few other ones, and then uses subject to special conditions include churches, schools, um, golf courses, um, hobby, hobby farming, um, which is, is kind of essentially what they're doing, is a hobby farm. Um, so, or they're maybe a bona fide farm. I don't know if they're actually, you know, in, in the breeding operation and making money off of that. Looks like maybe they are, so.
They, I know they were in the past because my neighbor owned it, but I don't know who is.
So now they would be conforming, and if they were to, if they wanted to come in and expand their operation, um, there, there would be no question, really, anymore, where presently there is because it's a non-conforming use.
Is it?
Now, it could, if they, if they had hopes of selling that property to a Mobile Home Park developer, then I guess they're out of luck for that.
What is it, two years this exchanged hands because, uh?
Oh, yeah.
Initially, it was owned by Mr. Brown. And then about approximately two years ago, because I worked there for a couple of years, and, uh, you have a young lady and a partner that purchased the property. What I don't know is how much of the one hundred acres they originally belonged to Mr. Brown, whether they purchased all one hundred or a section of it. I don't know.
Probably all of it because, um, Sid Brown just recently passed away and his kids have been selling off the estate. And so unless there's a for sale sign on it now, she probably bought the whole thing.
Yeah. So I would imagine they might prefer to have it as a single-family residential for the future development potential.
Is there a tax difference in the properties, designation?
Nope, nope, tax, uh, the, what you're taxed at is depending on what, what your, what your use is. Um, so, um, yeah, zoning does not affect your tax classification.
That's all right. It'll penalize.
Yeah. No, that, it just would not penalize them.
Okay.
So I don't know, I, I, you know, I was kind of thinking, like, what's, what are the, what are the drawbacks, thinking of the same questions, you know, what, what would it hurt them in any way? Um, I'm not sure. And of course, they will get a notice, so they'll get an opportunity. And it is something too, you know, we may, uh, the township may want to reach out to them in a proactive measure to give them a heads up on what we're thinking before they get a notice in the mail. They're like, oh, my gosh, what's the township trying to do to us?
That would help.
Uh, similarly, for DTE, I already talked to Duane and Wendy that, um, the DTE, I mean, they've been good partners with us throughout, you know, the, the master plan, the, the riverfront redevelopment plan that we did, but I, I suggested that they would, they should be provided a copy of the draft, um, before the public hearing and just given a, a heads up as to what we're up to, the opportunity to comment.
So that was my question on the, uh, the RMU district.
Right.
Uh, you said, oh, well, it would remain I one until DTE didn't use it, but.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of a, a wishy-washy. When do they quit using it?
Yeah.
I mean, does that mean they can never sell it to anybody else for an industrial use?
Yeah. So let's, um, if you wanna, I don't know if you wanna have any other comments about that, um, the horse farm, the R three property. If not, then let's move on to the RMU district.
Do we need a motion on that, or do we?
You don't need a motion on that.
Just motion, just, uh?
If, unless somebody has, like, a disagreement on that, then we would.
No, it sounds reasonable to me.
It's agreeable.
Okay.
Do you agree that maybe, uh, the township should proactively, like, reach out to them and just give them a heads up?
Certainly, certainly, yeah.
Honestly, they probably don't even know it's zoned.
They may not even know. And it, so that's why it would be important to just explain it to them before they get a notice in the mail, so.
I do have a question, though, before we move on.
Yeah.
You said we do have a Mobile Home Park.
Don't you?
Do we?
Isn't it up in the north part of town?
That's what I thought.
You've got a little.
My question to that is, since we're talking about non-conforming.
Why isn't it zoned Mobile Home Park?
Why isn't it zoned Mobile Home because it's zoned residential?
Yeah. I looked at that just now, too. Maybe that should be a third property. We should actually rezon that to Mobile Home Park.
Because it's functioning, I'm assuming it's the one with a little circle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a little, it's a little kind of turnaround street there in the northern part of town. Yeah, why isn't that zoned?
I mean, that essentially says that that entire site's non-conforming if that's the current zoning.
Right.
And I'm sure that was, I think that Mobile Home Park's been there forever.
Forever.
I know it went through a renovation or improvement, I don't know, ten years ago, but.
And so that one, too, would, they would get a notice, and of course, from their perspective, they would probably appreciate that, um, no longer being non-conforming. Now, the neighbors around them might be a little concerned if you're changing it to Mobile Home Park use. Obviously, they'll, they'll have to recognize, and we can easily explain, well, it is a Mobile Home Park, so.
Yeah.
It's not changing.
That's a lot easier.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, that's a, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point. I'll, I'll make him know of that. Okay. So the, this riverfront mixed-use district, you'll see, um, it's been added as a, as a proposed district under. This would be page twenty-eight. That's just the Article Three zoning districts in map, so that it would just be listed as one of the available zoning districts. And then the actual language would start on, uh, page seventy-four of the packet. And we call it a new Article fourteen A, Riverfront Mixed Use District. So, and as you remember, we went through this process with DTE as, as a partner, and they participated in that riverfront redevelopment planning study. And my, my thought at that time was DTE's major objective, I mean, obviously, they were actively engaged in the, you know, plans to decommission that site. They were very interested in, in having a lot of open doors and opportunities. Flexibility is key for them to be able to facilitate the, the long-term incremental kind of conversion or redevelopment of that property.
They still were very careful not to shut the door on existing uses.
Yes, yes, they, they wanted to keep their doors open, uh, for sure. Uh, the master plan really didn't do anything different other than just recognize that, hey, we just adopted this riverfront redevelopment plan. Uh, but the future land use map did show, um, consistent with the riverfront redevelopment plan, that that particular area, uh, could be a, a mixed-use type of a district. So I didn't, you know, knowing in particular that DTE wants to keep options open and that there was never a desire for, for, for them to, they never asked us to come in and be very prescriptive about, here's how the streets should be laid out, and here are the specific uses, and this is the height of the buildings, and, and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I didn't want to come in with a very prescriptive zoning district that says, you must do this. Rather, this is, if you've read through it, if you had an opportunity to read through it, you'll see that it's very broad, um, and really does give great flexibility for the property owner, whether it's DTE or a future property owner, if they would sell it to somebody else.
Pretty much says you can do anything except industrial, doesn't it?
Um, no, industrial is one of the options, not quite like the heavy manufacturing, though.
Okay.
And so the theory is, okay, they would come in and propose a master development concept for this property, for the redevelopment. It's highly likely that it would be in multiple phases over an extended period of time, and you could, uh, the township, Plan Commission First Township Board ultimately could adopt a master redevelopment plan for the site, and then they could, when the time comes for phase one, phase two, phase three, and so on, uh, they would come in for site plan approval for each, each specific phase, and can get approval to move forward in that regard. But the, but, but in the meantime, this district, the, the language that's put in here is essentially, would essentially default to the current zoning, which is I two. So until such time as they would come in and propose that master development plan for the site, they're essentially regulated as they currently are under the I two district. So the, the advantage to them is that when they're ready, it gives them great flexibility. Um, it doesn't tie them on what they can do right now, but it gives them flexibility for that redevelopment in.
And let's, now, what if they want to sell the property to an independent power producer to put a new gas plant on the site?
Yeah. So let's take a look at the language, um, and let's see if we would allow that or not. I guess, um, I, I think maybe we have language to that effect.
Okay.
So first, the purpose statement here, um, you know, this district, we want to facilitate the redevelopment of the decommissioned power plant and adjacent lands along the St. Clair River. And this language, in these items, uh, the goals essentially are taken pretty much, uh, from the re, Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. In terms of applicability, the district shall apply to those properties so designated on the East China Township Zoning District. So that's why this language needs to be accompanied by the zoning change on the map. The next section is that comprehensive physical development plan. So this indicates that when they're ready for any new development or redevelopment, which establishes new buildings, structures, or new uses not associated with the current use of the property as a power plant, a comprehensive physical development plan shall be submitted, um, for review by the township and approval under essentially the same procedures as your planned neighborhood development district. So I think that language is, is clear here, that they can continue, and it works with the very next section, existing uses and development. So existing uses, buildings, and structures within the RMU district shall not be considered as non-conforming, provided they were approved and legal at the time of passage of this article and have not been modified unless in compliance with this article. Until such time as a comprehensive physical development plan is approved pursuant to this section, existing and proposed uses within the RMU district shall be regulated by the requirements of the I two Industrial Two District. So.
So unless they file, um, a specific comprehensive physical development plan, it still stays I two?
Yes. And, and it even says, um, that any uses, um, essentially, any use associated with the current use of the property could remain as a power plant. So they could sell it to somebody else, and somebody else could, what, operate the power plant.
Or they can build a brand-new power plant.
Yeah.
Because it says, or proposed.
Is that what you would like to? I think we probably should be a little bit more clear.
Well, if they sell it to a third party, they're not going to use that existing plan. They're going to build a gas plant.
Yes.
Similar to what they did across the street.
I see, okay. So, so that's, that's, okay. So the question is, would you be open, uh, to, to that?
Well, I mean, they're, I would think that they would be very reluctant to, you know, entertain any change in zoning if it, it didn't allow that.
Oh, yeah, I would agree with that. It's not, it's not what was envisioned, envisioned in the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. Certainly, it did not talk about putting in a new power plant.
And, and they were very careful, the, the representative, you know, said a whole bunch of times, she doesn't speak for DTE.
Yeah.
They, they never legally committed to any of that. They just agreed to pay for it.
Yeah, that's true.
Looked at it.
Yeah. Although I also, I also don't think during, during those discussions that really they ever, they talked about, you know, continuing the operation, um, I don't know that it was ever on the table to.
No.
Tear down and build.
No, they, they, it was, it was never mentioned.
Never mentioned as a possibility.
But I mean, even if it's not a, a, a gas plant, if they want to tear it down and cover the whole site with solar panels, that's.
Right, right. Um, so.
That's much more likely.
So maybe the language should, should be a little bit more clear to stress that if they ever want to go away from what's allowed in the I two, then they have this option on the table for them to submit a comprehensive redevelopment plan for the township to approve it, and then for them incrementally to seek, you know, phased, phased approvals.
I, I think that's a fair.
Yeah.
Thing. It doesn't, you know.
Yeah.
Take away their, their rights as a property owner, and it gives them actually a, a nice set of options that, if they want, if they want to do something other than power generation.
Yeah.
But also, it just keeps all other options open, because honestly, there's a lot of towers that are never going to go away on that site.
Oh, yeah, all the.
So, yes, there will forever be some power infrastructure at that site.
Comprehensive, to produce a comprehensive alternative plan.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that whole centerpiece with all the, the towers and the transformers is always going to be there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, so I'll just make sure, both in sections, subsections forty-eight point three and forty-eight point four here, that it's clear.
Okay.
That they can continue to use this and are regulated essentially under the I two until such time as they want to go away from I two district uses.
Okay.
And propose a redevelopment for the site, then they would submit this comprehensive development.
Cool.
So with, then, if they do move forward, or whenever they would move forward with that comprehensive physical development plan, what could be shown in that plan? What uses would be allowed within that plan? So again, significant flexibility, so that would be principal uses permitted, basically any of the uses allowed in the planned neighborhood district. So that could include some residential, like multifamily residential, although it's probably unlikely, given the environmental, you know, circumstances at the site and remediation, that residential may, might not be market feasible, but if they could make it work, then it's on the table here. Uh, all principal permitted uses within the local business district, so that would be, um, generally smaller scale, neighborhood, service, commercial uses. All principal uses permitted with the, in the industrial or research office district. So that, that one wouldn't allow power plants. That's more of a, you know, high-tech research-type district, so those type of uses. Um, industrial, medical, and dental clinics, uh, medical, optical, pharmaceutical, and dental laboratories, uh, data processing and computer centers. So, you know, that was definitely mentioned in the redevelopment plan. Obviously, it's immediately adjacent to water, which is a huge need for a data center, to keep it cool. And it's adjacent, adjacent to power, which is another huge need for a data center. Trade, industrial, or technical school, warehouse and wholesale establishments, and distribution facilities, so, um, you know, that would include like a, I guess, something like that, a distribution center, um, or a distribution facility that is tied to the river, and the access to the river. Utility and public. Utility and public service facilities needed to service the immediate vicinity, but excluding any outdoor storage, and then other uses similar to those listed above. So, really giving significant flexibility and opportunity there. Uh, minimum eligibility criteria. So, we would want to make sure that that comprehensive development plan covers at least forty acres. I think the whole site was like a hundred and sixty acres, something like that. So, any comprehensive development plan needs to incorporate a bigger portion, or if not the whole site. Uh, it would need to be under control by one owner. Uh, it would need to, uh, meet those purposes, those A through G items, on, you know, a couple pages earlier. And I think one of the things that we was discussed significantly, and what people want is, you know, we've got this riverfront property, so, uh, and it's also there, you know, could be an opportunity to restore some of that riverfront habitat. So, the, the minimum eligibility to dedicate at least a portion of, of this site as part of any redevelopment to open space. And in particular, um, space that would be made available to the general public, not just, you know, set aside and have nobody be able to access it, but... So that language is on, then, the top of page seventy-six, item C. So a minimum ten percent of the net developable area on the site shall be irrevocably dedicated as open space. Further, a portion of such open space, in a location, size, and shape approved by the East China Township Board, shall be made available to the general public. So ideally, some space along the river itself. The dedicated open space shall be set aside, you know, in perpetuity, using some sort of a, a mechanism approved by the township board, which assures that the lands remain as open space. So it could be a conservation easement, it could be, you know, deeded as part of a master deed, or the, a particular, that space could be deeded directly to the township. So that's the good, part of the give and take, right? So we want, if we're going to allow you to do this redevelopment here, we want it to be done well, and that's where we refer to the, kind of the purposes at the, at the beginning of this article. And we also want some open space preserved, and in particular, we want some public access provided. And then there's just some general requirements, either kind of just, you know, basic buffering type requirements, um, outdoor storage of goods will be prohibited, it's not intended to be a, um, that kind of a development, right? Where you've got junkyards and whatnot. A berm, a, where at a BUP central district, generous setbacks, um, hundred-feet buildings, fifty feet for off-street parking. Uh, potentially, we could even go higher than that. I mean, there's plenty of buffer, um, this is a big enough site, and, and especially if we're talking about things like maybe, you know, a data center, or, you know, big, these won't be tall buildings necessarily, I wouldn't imagine, um, but...
There's, it's really not...
Hundred feet, when you really think about it, isn't that much.
And there's, the only residential bump would be just this little piece at the end of the, of Point Drive over here.
Mm-hmm, right.
Because the, the rest of it's all township or DTE or...
That's true.
They're going to keep that piece at the north end, because it's got their water supply for the new power plants there, so...
Yeah. You know, green belts along the, the frontage streets or the internal streets. Uh, item E essentially says that all requirements applicable, okay, so, let's say they're going to build a, uh, maybe it's an office, office park or something like that. So that, that's allowed in the, uh, I would have, probably the IRO, the Industrial Research Off, Research Office District. So, item E there is saying that all requirements applicable to lot sizes, setbacks, height, density, off-street parking spaces required, um, and other requirements shall be met in relation to each respective land use in the development, based on the zoning districts in which the use is listed as a principal permitted use. So essentially, that would be the, the, the default setting for how the, how this redevelopment should be laid out. Whatever, you know, okay, it's an office park, okay, so that's the R-I-R-O district, that's what you're going to comply with. Except, item F then says, here's where the flexibility is allowed. So the planning commission and the township board ultimately may allow deviations, so they could have maybe slightly greater building height, or maybe greater density, or reduced setbacks, or reduced parking. That would just have to be kind of negotiated as part of that, the review and approval of that, uh, comprehensive development plan. Um, what do you think about that item C, setbacks from any budding residential district? Maybe we could stand to increase that a little bit?
Like I say, it's a...
There isn't much residential adjacent, but we probably, just for their sake.
Just a one hellstone at the end, okay. Yeah. That's the one that's right next to the, to the dock, so if they're going to use the dock at all...
Okay, so maybe a hundred feet is fine. Keep it what it is, okay?
It's going to depend on the development plan.
That's true.
I mean, if it's something, you know, that's very tall, or, you know, if they want to put a data center in or a, it's going to be a high bay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't put something that's a hundred and fifty feet tall right up against the property line.
And that's why we wouldn't approve it, yeah.
Office building, you're not even going to notice it, so...
Okay. Okay. So that's the concept, that's, that's what, you know, we're proposing here. I don't, I don't know if you're on board, does it make sense?
Yeah, one other thing, then, her, clicked it, uh, the ITC portion in the middle.
Yeah.
They, they were never part of the redevelopment, and it said staunchly, they don't ever intend to give up their land.
That's true.
Should we leave that one as I-2?
Um...
They might object to it, even though it says, yeah, you can keep using it, but...
Yeah, does ITC actually own it, or do they lease it from DTE?
Anyone.
It is separate. Well, they'll get a notice if we move forward with it. And they may object to it.
We've never, I mean, nobody's ever really talked to ITC as much as we ask DTE.
Right.
You know, what, talk to them, what do they intend to do? I mean, they're, it's like, well, you know...
But it isn't as fast, changes nothing for them, right?
It doesn't, really.
So this just gives them options also.
Right.
Other than the fact, if anything changes, they may say, I don't want any change. Why don't...
Yeah, I mean, as the property owner, they can choose to do nothing with their property and keep it the way it is, and it will stay exactly the same under the I-2. It's only when they would say, okay, developer, you can take this and include it as part of this development. In the redevelopment plan, we, as you remember, we, we worked around it.
Yeah.
Because we knew that they, basically, the uses of, of the nature, that it's just not going to be...
As long as we want electricity, that's going to be there.
Yeah, it's not, it's going to be there, so... Yeah. They may question it, but we can easily explain it.
And I guess, the, the, the fallback would be okay?
We won't change your, your piece, we'll keep it as I-2.
You leave your piece I-2 and change the rest of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just so we keep that in back of our minds.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Um, yeah, any, any other comments or suggestions there with regard to this mixed-use district? Uh, if not, we can talk about kind of next, next steps. So I think, I think it would be good, and it sounds like you're in agreement, that the township should reach out to these property owners as a proactive measure, just to inform them of what we're up to, including DTE, and give DTE even a copy of this draft language. You know, we used to have, I don't think Stephanie, was it Stephanie Barris, as I recall, was her name? I don't, I don't know that she's there.
Yeah, I don't, she's still...
The local government representative anymore, but I'm sure they must, she must have the next in line.
Yeah.
Um, so we can try and identify that person and, and reach out to them and explain what this is all about. Uh, but ultimately, we would need to hold a public hearing on this tech, proposed, the text changes, not just the Riverfront Mixed-Use, but the entire text changes that we have in your packet, and then the, the couple few zoning district changes here that we have as well. So I would help the township get the notices prepared, and, and they would need to be sent out. Those notices and letters would need to be sent out, uh, and published in the newspaper at least fifteen days in advance of the public hearing. You meet the second Tuesday of every month.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know when, how far in advance you need to get a notice to the newspaper to get it published, but I don't think we have enough time to get on the October fourteenth planning commission for a public hearing. And that wouldn't give us enough time to, to reach out, make a good faith effort to reach out to these, uh, entities as well. But maybe you would be ready for that second Tuesday in November for a public hearing.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then maybe, um, I suppose it could be a formal motion that you could, um, uh, ask the township, township administration essentially to, to move forward toward a November eleventh public hearing.
Which is Veterans Day, but I still, it's still on our meeting schedule?
Or you could hold a special meeting, um...
I have no idea whether we, we didn't have it for, for Veterans Day.
I think, I think we left it on the schedule.
I think we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe more important is that you could, you know, ask the township administration to work toward setting a public hearing date for you.
Say specifically which one?
Yes.
As early as possible, convenience.
Yeah.
Because you, you had a couple minor tweaks you were going to...
Yeah, there's a couple minor tweaks, and, and I'll provide, I can just get you an updated draft by, at least by email, uh, so that you have it in your hands at least. Uh, just, yeah. And then if you had comments, you can just reply to me individually with any additional comments. Remember, by email, of course, you can't have any deliberation or discussion or anything like that.
I've commented out. Okay, so if we have a motion, um, do we want to outline the steps, or just say, tell the township that...
I, I don't think you need to outline the steps, I'll make sure that they're aware that, um, we want to reach out to these entities before the notices are sent out.
Reach out to the entities and then start the formal procedure?
And then start the formal procedures, notices and all of that, yeah, to identify that public hearing date.
So...
Would we include that mobile home park two?
Yeah.
Up in the north part of town, I think you might as well.
Yeah, why not clean it up?
Yep. You can always decide not to move forward with any of the rezonings, for whatever reason.
Public hearing, anything, because of such an upper, okay, leave it.
Yeah, believe it. Yep.
All right. So...
Let's take a stab at the motion. Okay, let's make a motion that we ask the township to reach out to the current owners of the three properties that are being talked about being rezoned, and, uh, let them know what our intentions are, and then start the formal process to...
Notice.
Notices and public hearings and...
For, yeah, send the formal process for notices for a public hearing.
For a public hearing, and to initiate the zoning changes.
Yes.
I'll support it.
Jackie's writing like crazy, woman.
Yeah, so you didn't actually say a specific date, which I think is good.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah.
We don't want to do it on November eleventh, right?
All right, so I have a motion, somebody support it?
I'd support it.
Steve supports it, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
Sounds good.
Is that, uh, is that about it then?
That's it, that's all I have for you.
All right. That was, uh, our unfinished business, new business, I don't think we have any. And anybody else want to discuss anything else? If not, entertain a motion for adjournment. Huh, herb?
Seven forty-six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? No? Motion, minutes adjourned. Seven, seven forty-six.